Ranger.
Here.
Andy Schaefer.
Here.
Todd Thing.
Here.
Sean Morgan.
Here.
Tim Weber.
Here.
Hal Wren. Robin Eulon.
Here.
Tim, would you do the invocation for us?
Absolutely, let's follow. Oh Heavenly Father, Sovereign God, we thank you for your son Jesus, gave his life on the cross and rose three days later, for all who come upon his name they shall be saved. And Lord, I lift up this meeting to you tonight, lift up the council, uh, all the staff, employees, I lift up our police, our fire, and other firefighters in our, in our other community in this county, uh, maker that, uh, has gone through a lot already with the wildfires down there, Lord, I ask that you put your hand on it. You protect all those that are fighting the fires, you protect all the families. And, and, and all those folks down there, uh, to the east and, and also I lift up rifle, um, Glenwood Springs and any of these other communities nearby that are affected and the whole state. Lord God, I ask that you provide some relief, um, and may your name be glorified through all this. And I ask, Lord, that we honor your name tonight in this meeting and we make decisions not on personal beliefs, but on the beliefs on behalf of those that we serve in this community. I ask, Lord, that you, um, uh, continue to guide us and protect us and help this community to flourish. Give us the moisture that we need, Lord. And just continue to guide and protect us in our decisions and our actions. We ask this in your son's precious name, amen.
Amen. Alan, would you lead us in the pledge?
Plagues and to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Welcome, Kyle Wren. Number five, minutes of the meeting discussion and action to approve the town council minutes of July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to approve the town council minutes of July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
Motion made by Andy, seconded by Sean, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Five B, discussion and action to approve the special me- meeting minutes of August fifth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved as presented.
Second.
Who was that you got? Motion made by Tim, seconded by Kyle, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay petitions and public input. Have anybody that's? Yes, sir.
My name is Jeremy Lancaster, uh, just, I've been a resident of Rangel for a long time, know most of you up here. Um, moved back here in April. I'm coming to you wearing two hats tonight. First is a concerned citizen. I had the opportunity of dealing with one of your employees today. And to be honest with you, the way she treated me was plum out, just disrespectful. Now, I'm gonna flip on my other hat. I work at Tractor Supply, she came down there. Um, obviously from the minute she came through the door, she was on a mission, okay? I would have been fine having a nice polite conversation with her, would have tried to explain the situation that honestly, I have no idea, honestly, couldn't tell you. You know, that building was built by a general contractor who dealt with all of the inspectors, all the paperwork, all of that stuff. Um, the part that upset me the most is there was customers in the store. And the one guy walked up after she left and said, man, sound like you were getting an ass eaten right there. I said, yeah, but, um, most of you know me, I didn't back down. Um, I, honestly, I told her, she needs to change her attitude. And she continued to just rip me up one side and down the other, and finally I told her, I said, maybe you should look up the definition of nice in the dictionary. You know, like I said, she come in there, I honestly had no idea that there was an issue with a permit. I didn't deal with permits. My manager didn't deal with permits. That was people above us. And she expected me to know every inspector that came in that building while it was being built, every inspector we dealt with, and I'll tell you what, there was five or six of them in there. I can't tell you the state fire inspector's name. Do I care? No. He was there doing his job and I was there doing mine. And I wasn't dealing with permits. So for me to know that guy's name, I don't even know the county, uh, electrical inspector that came down, the state electrical inspector. Um, you know, and then she proceeds to tell us how we're doing things illegally because these permits weren't signed off. And I, I said, ma'am, I, honestly, I don't know. I, if I need to stop selling propane right now, I'll shut it down. And she turned and walked out of the building. And one of my employees went in the back, brought back a piece of paper, he said, hey, we got this piece of paper the day they came and told us we could sell propane. So I took it out to her, handed it to her. And, uh, she read it to whoever she was on the phone with. And so it had to do with the scale. So it, it didn't give us the, the approval to sell propane. Um, she asked to come in the building, I took her back to the back room, she looked for anything hanging on the wall, nothing was there, then she left. Then I get a phone call from AmeriGas National Corporation, uh, that handles all the accounts and basically made it sound like he was being threatened that the town was gonna find him a bunch of money, the state of Colorado is gonna find him a bunch of money. And to me, it's ridiculous. It, it's just, you know, this town hasn't had any new businesses in quite some time. Um, I think Tractor's done a pretty good job building the building, trying to support the community. You know, uh, I talked with Rich and Ty, they come pick up multiple bags of stuff we've donated to the animal shelter. And I just, I hope you guys address her, sit down with her and address her attitude because to grind an axe over something like that, when I'm just a pea on with Tractor Supply. You know, yeah, I'm the assistant store manager, but I have none of that documentation. And I just hope that if she's dealing with other people like that, who the hell would want to open a business in this town? And I, I, I hope you guys understand where I'm coming from, and I hope you guys, if you got any questions, feel free to come talk to me, but, I mean, I just, um, I don't think it's right, she went back down there after I'd left and she ripped into one of my other managers. And, you know, what? I wouldn't put a padlock on it, I have the key, we can't sell propane, okay? I, I'll comply with her. But if she's threatening people about fines and shutting people down and things like that, I believe it's unnecessary, you know? Um, you know, Tractor Supply is doing everything they can, I've already been on the phone with district managers trying to find out what's going on, what we need to do to rectify it. Um, it's just, this is a small place, y'all know, y'all been here a long time, so. Um, I, that's really all I wanna say, and I just hope that somebody can address the issue. Um, we wanna work with you guys to get it rectified. And I know there's people above me at the corporate level that are already involved trying to get it rectified, so. Um, you know, I just don't want her coming back 'cause now she's telling us we gotta have a final inspection and, you know, I don't need her coming in there nitpicking things that are gonna, are gonna shut, shut it down, send fourteen employees home, you know? That's my concern. Um, so, that's all I have, I thank you guys for your time.
Jeremy, I, I mean, I really appreciate that you're coming down, and I think that there are, you know, some, a few things that, you know, she, she may have or may need record of it, but as far as, um, service, like you got today, I don't think it's acceptable at all. And so, if you would, if you would write the things down that, um, that her actions, then please give that to the town manager, if you, if you would mind writing that down. And, um, we'll get it addressed because our customer service cannot be like that at the town of Rangel, that is unacceptable.
No. I'll bet you did.
So this?
I, I will tell you this. Had she been talking to my employee that first contacted her, if she would have been talking to him like that, I would have told her to get it out of my store. Because that is just not, not the way you do it, and I served this town for eight and a half years in their spot, and I never spoke to people like that unless they came at me first, so.
I think there's two, two sides to every story, but I can, I definitely respect you as a, as a assistant manager coming in and saying what you did, but like I said, we're, we should, our town should be here for customer support, and if it's, if we're lacking in some point or another, then we need to get it rectified.
And I, and I'm, I'm the first to tell y'all, our company is working like crazy to figure out what got left behind, what didn't get signed, you know? Um, and nobody's pointing any fingers. My thing is, is it just, I think it would, it would have never come to this had it been a nice polite conversation, 'cause I would have just said, ma'am, I don't know, but let me make some phone calls, let me help you, I'll quit selling propane right now.
I need to hear your.
So.
In private, your confidence, I need to hear.
Absolutely. I can swing by tomorrow if you're gonna be around, sir.
I think it needs to be on paper, if that's okay with your corporate. But I think, 'cause we get this, we get these often where we'll get a verbal complaint. And, um, you know, when it's on paper, it definitely will go, and I, I'm, I'm not opposed to the conversation with the town manager, but I definitely think if we can, if you can jot some things down, I think it'd be best.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Did you have something, Tim, or?
I was just assuming this is the first anybody from the town I've heard of it, other than employee in question that did this. Have you ever called town hall or talked to anybody prior to night other than coming here, Jeremy?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, this happened today, Tim, all I did is come down, I seen what time the town council meeting was, and I said, I'll just be at the county, I'll just come to the meeting.
Well done.
There's no, no need to beat around the bush, let's get it done.
Well, that will be luck to him, dude.
Thank you.
I was aware there was conflict, but I had only heard one side of the conflict.
Do you have any other public input? Okay, changes to the agenda?
Five B and thirteen A are veteran red, are what was added after the agenda was.
That's, hold on a second.
Sure, what we just talked about. Or the meeting here.
The special meeting.
Got it. Okay. Um, do we have anything on the public hearing? No. Council reports, number ten, anybody got anything to report?
Hi, Ron.
Okay, Todd.
We had the Western Rio Blanco nine-one-one meeting, um, the, uh, apparently the dispatch, um, alternate supply batteries are shot and it needs some other repairs, and so there, it's a significant expense, but the Rio Blanco nine-one-one board did approve the funds to repair that system. So it was, uh, I think the way it works, I think, is the town has to write the initial check, but then the nine-one board will reimburse the town for tho- that expense, so just wanted to make everybody aware of that.
Okay. And I have to apologize, I skipped one, I'll come right back to it, sorry about that. But before we do that, I wanted to let everybody know too, uh, this rare grant that we have, that the town has, uh, we had, um, five groups or, or individuals that came to the class. And to pitch competitions, thank you, and so they will be making their pitch to the committee on, on possibility of starting a new business, renovating and so on like that, but eh, that's good, pretty good turnout. Altogether, there were ten people in that class, 'cause there were some of them were, uh, as partners, so. Now, anything else from the council? Okay, let me move to number nine, sorry, town manager update.
It's fine, I got a number of things to cover, one in particular, I'll save till the end, and that's, uh, discussion about our water situation. We've had a little bit of an online discussion about it, but I wanted to give you a more clear update on it first. I'd like to mention that, um, did have a conversation with Lee from Charter Communications today about the status of our fiber. Um, that's been affecting everything from the back call on our cell phones to, uh, access that we have, uh, just all around the town. Uh, there was a fire damage sustained to one of their fibers that went through a culvert at some point, a shallow berry. They haven't been able to get to it until this afternoon. Uh, they did get a team on site this afternoon, um, I don't, I didn't get an update from them, he said he'd give me an update as soon as he had good news on the status of that fiber, but they did get a team out there on site, so we should be seeing some significant improvements in what's going on with all of our communications around here, hopefully. And especially with our cell phones, I'm hoping that that has an impact on it. A lot of the voice transmissions you have on a cell phone, as many of you know, um, wind up on fiber for a certain period of the cycle before they go up into another town or re-broadcasting. So we had that, um.
I got a, I have a small update, RIT director got an update this afternoon, and they're splicing the lines, so it should be pretty soon when they get it back up and going.
Looking forward to that, it's been really difficult to maintain appropriate communications with everybody. Let's see, I know, I don't wanna, Ty's here tonight, I don't wanna step on anything with him, but, uh, um, he did interview three candidates with patrol officers today. Um, we haven't talked since he did that, but we did conduct interviews today. Um, Jocelyn did secure two more grants. One is a verbal commitment from Fish and Wildlife, the other one's a chapter grant. Each of them for approximately thirty thousand dollars to help out with our bofam project, so we are getting close now to the original bid that we got back, our original low bid, so we're getting really close to being able to close that project out. Um, with, without a lot of carryover into the next year. Most of these notes, I guess, are things that I need to talk with staff about. Um, we do have, uh, this Friday, all of our capital improvement requests, our capital, our requests are due in on the budget, so we're moving along with those first steps in the budget for next year. Um, we've been working on our current budget status with an eye on our diminishing revenues that we have coming in, I've been working with the staff on identifying areas that we can cut back on costs at this point. No, that is something that I think we'll talk about in a different format. Um, I did wanna mention that we did get the, uh, um, the green waste pile moved, and we've had a few people come down to it at this point, I thought maybe we would get more with Tim's closure of his pile, but I think we've only had three or four at this time, or hours, or two to four on Thursday, ten to three on Friday. We're gonna remain open again, um, over the weekend, I think the mayor hit on the pitch competition already. Um, we do have, um, Genie is really close to having, um, a body of people to bring before the town council for the CLG Main Street Committee. Um, if you have any other people that you might have in mind, I know she'd love to hear from you about people that might wanna serve on that committee, but I think on our next agenda, for our next meeting, we're gonna be able to um, address the appointment of a, of a committee for our Main Street Committee, so. The thing that's been on my mind quite a bit is our water status that we have in the river. Um, I gave you two sheets up there, uh, for reference points while we have a, a bit of a conversation here. But I wanna, I wanna walk through everything that's going on, first of all. The, the flow sheet that I gave you shows the White River below Boise Creek, here in Rangel, the reference point. That's just above Kenny reservoir, so what we're tracking with that is, um, basically the flows into Kenny. At this point, and, uh, we've had a bit of a discussion about it. Um, a couple weeks ago, we had our flows in the river take a dramatic turn, uh, towards a minimal flow. In fact, at the time that it took its downturn, um, we got at least fifty percent below the lowest recorded flow in the river since we started keeping records, and you can see there's a reference point along the bottom. Uh, selected prior, oh, that cut that part off. Um, on the, on the chart, you can see some reference points on there. There's a, a fairly straight line along the very top of the chart, that reflects the average flow over the cycle of us collecting data, it's a pretty straight line, the, the tan line is last year, and the flows in the experience there. Uh, the blue line at the bottom is where we're at, and if you look, you can see over the weekend, we dropped below fifty, um, cubic feet per second. Very low discharge rate on that.
I got a question real quick.
Yes.
The four hundred, the solid line at the top, is that our usage, town of Rangel usage?
No, that's actually the historic average of the river flow, so if you ra- average, uh, since the, I believe the forties is when we started collecting data, that's the average flow of the river.
So I guess in my email that I sent, I was a little bit confused that we are, that we were using four hundred, um,
No.
cubic feet per second versus, and then I thought that we were at four hundred is what we're using, and we were at seventy or whatever, so that was my confusion on the email.
Sorry about that, that's, uh, what we're actually at, is our maximum capacity to draw from the river with the equipment we have is six cubic feet per second. And our right in the river is about twenty-eight cubic feet per second that we have. That is not, that's not fully proved up, unfortunately, and we're looking at ways that we can put more of that to beneficial use, but that's a side discussion that we need to hit on in the future to make sure that we don't lose any of what we are currently entitled to.
So we can pull six cubic feet per second?
With both of our pumps on, that's the maximum we can pull at any time for the river.
So then what's our daily usage?
Our daily usage right now, um, we'd have to look at it in, um, MGB, or millions of gallons per day, right, 'cause they have a little diversion on it. But our, eh, uh, we're about seven hundred MGB at this point, or seven hundred point seven MGB as well. So that, that's our current consumption rate in the winter, we're significantly below that, we're around point two-five MGB, that's what we're looking at. Um, it's a low draw, um, system that we have, and because of that, um, and when we get into some of these issues with the uh, water restriction policy that we have, the fact we have low flows through our system anyway will show how we have some flaws in that plan that we have to address as we look forward at how we did this. So at any rate, we're at historic lows in that river. It's caused a lot of concerns for me and the staff, for Alan, um, and we've been looking at how to manage. Now, what's critical about that, getting back to your question, Andy, is we have a system right now, three pressure sys- pressurized, and it's came supporting each one of those. Then we have our pre-sedimentation ponds, um, now we have a treatment plant. If you fill all of those systems that we've got, and we do have those fully filled right now. I think that's a cell phone controller that's messing with our, our audio right now. But, uh, if we have all those filled, at our winter draw rate, we can last for about two weeks with no inputs into that system. Um, as it stands right now, we don't need to run it six, um, cubic feet per second in order to effectively fill our system and keep it full. If the pumps were on continuously, we would be drawing about two point eight to about three cubic feet per second in order to maintain the levels in our tanks and our pre-sediment to meet the demands that we have right now.
You're saying winter time usage, though?
Yeah, winter time usage is important because that's what our target is, is to institute, um, mandatory reductions in our, in our flow. Right now, if we, if we don't change that, we've only got a couple days of reserve in our system. So if we got to the point that we could not draw from the river, we would have to implement a policy that in effect prompts down our winter time draw rates, which would eliminate what Tim's doing, what the golf course is doing, what the college is doing. A lot of water would be brought out of the system in order for us to meet that pressure. But at that point, we'd be looking at life safety concerns, we'd be looking at preserving our ability to put out fires. We'd be looking at our ability to supply water to the hospital, um, and drinking water to our residents, so. When we get to that, and I'll jump on that here in just a second, uh, how we accomplish that, that would be the reason we would do it, we would be in a critical situation where we needed to reduce consumption until we could take a draw from the river again.
That brings up a question for me, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Sure.
Um, you mentioned Alvin earlier at the Ri- Water Conservancy District. I'd heard late today, but I didn't have a chance to follow up on it. Could it possibly part of our flow problem be because the hydro's not running?
Yes.
Cause the hydro's broke down, so I think that's a very important piece of information that needs to be introduced right away to this, that's gonna cause our river to dry up and give us that historical loss.
Exactly right.
So, you know, I think it would be advantageous to really keep that communication with him because, you know, I drive out there almost daily just to see how many gates they got open on that dam. Uh, and like I said, late today, it was too late to call him to verify, is the hydro down, and if the hydro's down, you've got a pretty big gate there that's not running any.
But that's, that's, I, I'm gonna.
It's down.
The hydro's.
Yeah, yes.
But I'm gonna have to argue with you on that one, 'cause whether the hydro's on or off, they're still only letting so much water through that deal, they've gotta maintain that certain water level at the dam, so they're not. But, so if the hydro's down, the water's just gonna fill up over the dam and fill over the spillway, so it's, I mean, they're talking about the water, this water meter that they have, the Boise Creek water meter, so it's, I mean, there's only so much and so much out of the, the lake, what Alvin's told me.
And I'm not trying to argue with you, I'm just trying to verify that we have all the information here, that we can trust what this is, so we are ready for when that time comes that, you know what? Alls I need for the golf course, switch and hats, is I need water for the greens, because you lose the greens, you're done.
So what's really critical? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Sean.
In theory, the way I understand it, if the hydro was not broke down, they would put a call on the river, because they would be, they have more senior water rights.
They do have a standing call of the river right now.
But they, they're not getting their water though, because they're not using it. they're not getting their water though because they're not using it in the hydro, I think.
They're just letting it overflow.
Yeah, that's, that's just our steady flow rate that we're getting. It's about thirty percent higher on average because of infiltration. At the point that it crosses the dam, but that's not a USGS meter. It's not a river gauge, so we don't use that one. But it's about thirty percent set higher than the Boise Creek one typically at that point. But that's a pressure gauge that interpolates the pressure and says, we think this is how much is going over the dam. But I think that's a very important point. If we put a call on the river, Alvin doesn't have a mechanism to release more water from that reservoir right now because the hydro is down. And that's
That's, that's not right either. Cause he does have a mechanism to release more water down.
So he does have a twenty-five inch pipe. It's a bypass pipe on that.
Right.
And I'll tell you, this is, he made an offer, which I think would be a great opportunity. It's not often that that hydro system is disassembled. And there's an opportunity to look at it, but he's asked if there's any interest in the council and giving a chance to go out there and go down and and look at the system while it's got it built up. So if we wanted to schedule a time with him or his staff, he'd love to have the council come by and look at the actual system and see what's going on. It's pretty fascinating. It's, it's really interesting. You can see into the turbine, they've got the top of the pipe off. And you can see how that entire system works. There, the problem with that, that twenty-five inch pipe, according to my conversation with him, is it would flood the pit if he opened that pipe. Because they're not even fully isolated from that twenty-five inch pipe.
What pit?
Uh, the one with the turbine. So it would, it would flood that. And I've talked to them about how critical it would be if we got to the point where we needed a bypass or time about life safety issues. And we would address that. And we would make sure somehow, he's going to be a fair amount of confidence that he would find a way to keep us going. Even if he had to do a discharge and then ask permission later, if he has that system. But he's got about four weeks out on, on being able to seal that system back up and get water in the river. So we really have a four week period when we're really looking at the highest level of risk. That's when our river should be the lowest and that's when the dam should have the least amount of options to help us with our discharge. So
So, right now, completely full with, with what our, all of our stations are, how many days if we were to run out of water, like just flat run out of water? How many days, how many days would we have?
And we were able to implement our mandatory reductions in consumption, we could go two weeks. That's our estimate.
With the water usage that we have with all the lawns?
Nope, we'd have to, we'd have to shut all of it off. We only have two to three days for watering. You know, that includes our raw water because the, the draw involves that. We would only have two to three days within our colony system program.
I just think it's going to be tough in two to three days to implement no water usage.
Have we had talks with Meeker and like upriver? Cause I mean, that impacts what we get downriver.
Yep. It all works on that basis. I have mentioned it in my conversations with county officials. They didn't distract it. I mean, I don't know if they really put it high on their list of things at this point. I don't know that. But I have had conversations with county officials that we're, that we're in a critical situation, potentially in a critical situation. The other thing I want to do is make sure that everybody knows.
Sorry, sorry, sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
I just wanted to wrap my head about the severity of it or like the,
Yes.
on a scale of one to ten, you know, ten being the worst case scenario, what, where are we at?
I don't think we're going to get to that point. If you watch the, the flows on that river, and I've been watching constantly, day and night, I, I don't think we're going to get to that point. And part of the reason is
So, scale of one to ten, five, four?
Oh, that's a tough one. I would say, if I was putting Las Vegas odds on it, I would say that we have a three in ten chance of that issue. Maybe two in ten. But there's a reason for that. Part of Alvin's assurance is that he would find a way to help us. The other part of it is we're only needing to draw on a continuous draw basis about three cubic feet per second from that river. Right now, we're significantly above that at the point that we have our own costs. And one of the things that's interesting to me that Alvin's talked about is from this Boise gauge down, there's a lot of infiltration that goes back into the river. So you would think that the flood irrigation that we have on some of these fields would actually be diminishing it. But the ground's saturated. The water's actually migrating back into the river. So we see it flows being steady and stabilized by saturated ground that has water moving back into the river. And even if we get down to a point where it looks like our river has dried up, the amount of water we need to draw from that is not as significant as we might with those pumps on, as long as we, our pumps happen to be located in the bend of the river on the outward side of that, of that curve, the deepest part of that river. And if we have flows, we're able to capture those flows until we can, very small. So I don't think we're going to get to that point. But I think it's important for us to be prepared to enter into that point if we, if we do. Now, the implementation is another thing that's true. If you look at the other sheet that I gave you, the stage three and stage four, these restrictions that we're talking about are significant. But in order to effectively implement them, we need to do it by an action of the council, through regulations and ordinance. I've been talking with our county attorney Heather about this. How do we implement this in a timely fashion? If we get to the point where we have to do this, how do we do it quickly? And there's a good question on that. She doesn't have a good answer on it. She's researching that. Says she should have an answer by tomorrow. How do we do that quickly without going through the normal processes that we do with the act of ordinance? If you don't do this by an action of the council, it lacks teeth. It loses tie in the police department and our local force. Utterly billing folks without the teeth that they need in order to enforce the water restrictions. Relying on, we could go with, with that, to be able to accomplish that. I don't think we're going to get to that point. If you look, you can see that our flows did increase without rain upstream. I don't know if farmers are going to throw water out of their fields in Monza or what it is, but we have seen an increase in flows up there. And visually looking at the flows in the river, they're holding steady. If we do have to do this at some point, I'll have a good answer to Heather within a day or two as to how we'll, how we'll be in contact with the council to make sure that we have that mechanism dialed in and we know what to do when we get to that point. Now, this is the other thing that's really interesting about our system that I think conflicts with our current model. If our system is going to work effectively, we have to have steady flows through it. If we implement too many restrictions right now, we don't increase the amount of water in the river. We're already able to make a full draw on the river. But what we do is we reduce the amount of flow in our system. And that reduces our water quality. We have more kind in the tanks. We have to increase our coordination versus maintain our contact time before the water flows out of the tanks and into the lines and to the end of future. So if we reduce flows too much right now, we create a water quality issue and don't really improve our chances of being able to deal with it down the road. We kind of are in a situation where it's, it's almost like a precipice. We need to maintain our flows in our system and maintain quality of water. And we can do that as long as water is flowing into our, our outtake. But if it stops flowing into our outtake, we have to dramatically reduce the amount of water that we're consuming in order to make it stretch until we have flows back into the, the, the point at which we draw the water. So we have in stage one and stage two, which I didn't include on that sheet, water reductions, and they happen at different thresholds. And we haven't used those. We've asked for voluntary reductions, which is the stage one reduction. Mostly because we don't need significant reductions in our flow right now. We just want to make sure that everybody is aware that we are in a water critical situation. And they need to be watching what they're doing in case we have to implement more significant restrictions in order to maintain what we have. We've looked at a lot of different options. We've looked at the cost of trucking water in. The trucking cost would be the most significant. We could purchase water at a reasonable rate from Vernal City. They've offered that after the rate for us. But it still doesn't solve our problem. You know, for trucking it in five thousand gallons at a time, the problem is not solved. It doesn't give us higher flows. It doesn't give us, oh, it doesn't give us culinary reasons. But I should emphasize that the indications so far are not that we are going to have to do this. This is just the lowest water gear that we've ever had in the river since we started maintaining the records. So we need to make sure that we know what we're doing in case something does happen, if we're able to have. I've thrown a lot at you. Do you have any questions?
I think the council, I talked to Jimmy Michaels from BLM over in Meeker this morning. He was wanting to talk about some other stuff, but then we got kind of down a wormhole of, you know, what happens when all this ash and stuff starts coming down the river. It, it pollutes the, the dam and then our, our inlet water has to try to, try to start taking over this. He was going to talk to his folks up there and tell them that, you know, that this is definitely something that could affect us in the future. I don't know where that part of it's going to go. But then again, I talked to Michael about it, about what our, would our facility handle this stuff? And he said, when they built it, they figured it for the worst case scenario. So he is, his thoughts on it is we wouldn't have a problem once we get all this ash off of the, off the mountains coming down. Because, you know, basically what's burned up there is a drainage back down into the White River and we'll see it at some point. Whether it becomes spring or something, but we'll see that ash in the lake.
No chance of that plugging anything?
He seems to think that it, it will handle it. He, he didn't have a concern at this time about it. But going back to that Jimmy Michael saying, he was going to put that into their thought process right now that when they start mitigating the, pricks and stuff, that if they can do anything, they're going to try it. So I don't know how far it's on their mind right now, one hundred and some thousand acres.
Right, one hundred and twenty-five.
But it's definitely something of concern for us down the road.
Yeah, the fire concern. Now we have the water concern from the fire.
Yeah.
Yeah. I've been thinking about that quite a bit as well. I think honestly, our biggest element that protects us from that or helps mitigate that is actually Kenny Reservoir and all the sedimentation we've got upstream. You know, so a lot of that water, not all of the mining, a lot of it does hit that land at a certain point before it hits us. At least a portion of that. And then the sedimentation that happens in the, in the reservoir, it's got to help. So I just don't know how much sediment we remove before it hits our pre-set ponds and the river. On the subject of the fire, our PD has been working closely with Rio Blanco County to make sure that they've been able to handle the calls through our, our dispatch centers to do that work. We've got, I think we've got about seventy calls. Is that all that we've been handling?
Yeah, we've handled four or five in county calls for them.
That's directly associated with the
Yeah, except their request to cover law enforcement activities on the western county to the making books on the fire.
So we've been as active as we can in trying to help out with, with these fire looks. I mean, I'm sure you guys watch it as close as I do. It's very concerning to see where it's at. I had a big trip out to Meeker a couple of days ago. Really interesting. I'm sure Sean sees it every day. So.
Yeah, I'm driving right through that.
Yeah. But now, right now, the fifth largest fire in the state of the street. I think last time I looked, our containment was still under ten percent. And so we don't know where it's going until it runs out of heat to burn. Did you guys have any other questions for me?
Questions?
Follow-up question from the last town council meeting, just about the housing and the houses, if you were able to find anything out about that.
As far as synergy and working with them, I have talked with Aaron about that. And we have a scheduled meeting on to see where we can go with it, either on Thursday or Monday.
Anything else? Okay. Number eleven, supervisor reports. Anybody have any questions or anything on that?
I have one. I want you to look under gas department, under notable issues. Kelly will never give her own department props, but I thought that was actually pretty neat that they received an annual American Public Gas Association Safety Award for 2024.
Hi, let me just, can you hang on just a second? I don't know if I want to, this cannot, what did you have?
Anybody else have questions or anything they want to say about supervisor reports? Okay. Old business, we have none. New business, thirteen A, discussion of employment issues concerning the town manager and action on town manager's employment with the town of Ransley. I, I would caution everybody that we, if we, our, our discussion should, if there's any motion that needs to be made, people make a motion and second, and then our discussion can come after the motion made. If there is no motion or second, then we just go on.
I make a motion to provide the town attorney and the mayor to initiate and or conduct negotiations related to terms of service separation and possible severance to the town manager.
Second.
Okay, motion is made by Tim and second by Robbie. Now, any discussion that anybody would like to make on, anything they would like to talk about?
I'm, I'm in favor of what was proposed in the packet of performance review and the, the things that are outlined that you guys discussed between the attorney and you. I think there needs to be a little bit of time for him to, I think our last meeting was an initial, you know, onslaught of things to improve on. And I think there needs to be a period of time for him to prove himself. So that's my, that's my thoughts on that.
Anybody else? Okay, then, since we have a motion and a second, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion made by Tim and second by Robbie, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Same sign.
Opposed.
Okay, the motion does carry. Thirteen B, discussion and action to approve the July twenty twenty-five check register.
I'll make a motion to approve the July twenty twenty-five check register.
Well, second.
Motion made by Andy, seconded by Sean. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. C, discussion and action to approve a special event permit for the ALBPOE Lodge nineteen oh seven for Butch Cassidy Days on August twenty-second and twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, at the Rio Blanco County Columbine Park from twelve PM to eleven. on August twenty-second and twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, at the Rio Blanco County Colum- Columbine Park from twelve PM to eleven fifty-nine PM. You guys wanna come up and?
Hello, I'm Heather Hall. Um, we're gonna do, we wanna sell beer for the mutton bustin' for Bush Cassidy Days. Um, we'll probably set up about four and then sell until the ranch rodeo ends. I'm gonna say like seven thirty. And then we'll move to the covered barn and, uh, for the barn dance and sell in there. We will have signs like we just do for Roar, where it says, no alcohol buying on this point. Uh, we'll have it set up to where you get your ID checked and then you get a wristband. Um, if you don't have one on, then you either have to bring ID to get it, to get the alcohol. And then Saturday, um, we'll do the same thing, except there's the campfire and that starts at two. And then followed by a barn dance at the, after that.
Campfire?
Yeah, I know, I'm not sure why it's at two, but that's what it says.
Okay. And so you guys are just following the same routines you have in the past with the others?
Yeah.
And we did get a letter from the county for their approval.
Okay. Any, anybody have questions? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the special event permit for the Elk's BPOE Lodge nineteen oh seven for Bush Cassidy Days on August twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty twenty-five at RBC Columbine Park from twelve PM to eleven fifty-nine. Second.
Motion made by Robbie, seconded by Andy. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries. Thirteen D, discussion and action to approve the MOU between Ransley School District and Ransley Police Department for the school resource officer for academic year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Ty, is there anything you need to add or think we should add with this or are you good with it?
I, I don't think that there's anything to add to it, uh, to, the, our city attorney reviewed it. Um, I had Officer Kilduff, uh, review it as our SRO. Uh, we sent it to Alan, he reviewed it, um, and then I don't know where we're at past that.
So I don't, I don't think that the school has actually got a copy of it for them to go through and review it. So I think for us to go through and approve, I'll, I'll get you, I'll get you, bud. So I think that we need to, uh, we need to get this in the school district's hands before we can go ahead and sign it. So they can go ahead and make any modifications that they need to, um, before we, we actually sign the MOU and the schools comfortable signing the MOU.
Exactly, why don't you say, why don't you just say one? Just, cause I haven't seen it yet. I have not, I haven't seen the MOU. Um, so as soon as it gets into our hands, you will send off to the, the attorney department and actually talk a little bit more. So if there is any changes, I, you will, our, we'll, we'll hear.
Has it been sent to the, to the, uh, school, to the high school or to the school district?
I, I thought, uh, that that was included in those motions.
Uh, he was not, um, as I felt it would have been appropriate for me to jump your level and send it to him directly without your final approval on it. Uh, so on purpose, he was not included, but obviously our intent was to send it to him so that he, that he did have a chance to review it. Uh, we wouldn't expect the school district to enter into a contract with us without having their, uh, legal team and their, their people, the ability to review it, so.
Okay.
I saw this in the U, since we get it handled.
Okay, so can I ask you real quick, when is your next board meeting?
Uh, we have a work session tomorrow, but we need to message. So if we get, if we get the attorney looking at it, there's a pretty good chance we get a group like this.
Okay, alright.
Do you need a motion to table?
Be good if we did.
I think, I think that we can get that into your guys' hands, Jason.
Yes.
We'll, we'll get that into your hands. No, we will get it there.
Yep.
If
Go ahead.
If, if I can add, um, I, I understand that we didn't get that signed before our school year starts tomorrow. Our intent, uh, regardless of not having that signed, is we're gonna have Officer Kilduff in the schools tomorrow. Um, we will operate under our previous MOU. Uh, none of that will change, but we are gonna provide that service. We've arranged our schedule. We're prepared on the police department's side to be there for day one for the school district. Uh, we understand the importance of having this IGA, uh, signed and put into place. And we will, we will work diligently to make sure that gets done as soon as possible, but we're not gonna not provide service to the school district. So he'll be there.
We can make this up at the next town meeting.
But Jason, just one clarification, you said you could get this through the school board at your work session? You can approve that or would that be under a?
Discuss that during the work session, but maybe you can do the next meeting.
Where you, where you would approve it, okay. I, I thought I was misunderstanding.
And of course, depending on how the parent pays their, their, you know, that's a
Yeah, I get it.
If you're lucky, turn around, so.
I get it.
You need to, you're very welcome to serve by next, I'm not, I'm not a whole crap team, but I'm not promising things, but there's a chance.
Okay.
And you may have heard of these. I don't know where on board.
Good, okay, good work.
We have something in place now prior to this time?
Yeah, yeah, we do.
And how long, is there like a deadline for it or?
No.
No, it, it's an MOU, it's a understanding, the only thing that's changed is because, uh, we're proposing that the school district pay us.
Okay.
What we were operating on before was just providing those services at our cost.
Right.
So that's really the only difference, and we also work out the scope of what we're gonna provide for that payment and what they're to expect from us.
Okay.
That's the only real difference. We're still gonna be in, I mean, we were in the schools before and we're still gonna be in the schools. We're just working out that backend stuff.
Perfect, thank you.
So I'm gonna put it out there, i- is there a way that, absolutely, I mean, even if you give it to me and I take it down there, to get this to Matt Goggins' office tomorrow?
We can email it ten nights.
Okay, okay, that's what I wanna, and then we just go from there.
We can mail it.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So Robbie, go ahead, did, did you make a motion?
No, I was going to, but go for it, Andrew. I'll make a motion to table the discussion and action to approve the MOU between Ransley School District and Ransley Police Department for the school resource officer for academic year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Second. Motion made by Robbie, seconded by Kyle.
Are you sure?
Uh, I'm postponing this or tabling this until, uh, our next meeting. Any discussion? The only thing I wanna say is we've been working on this for a long time. I, I think it's a great thing, so I think we're getting it done, it's gonna be good. Yeah. And we appreciate the, the connection we have, the police department has with, with, um, the high school and the, and the elementary school, it, it makes a big difference. Anyway, we have a second or a, or a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries. Thirteen E, discussion and action to approve the donation to the Ransley Forest Members for add-ons in the amount of twenty dollars per member, which forty-two, uh, for a total of one thousand fifty dollars.
Clarification, twenty-five dollars, not twenty, and
Oh, twenty-five, thank you.
So moved as changed and, uh, as presented.
Second.
After Tim corrected me, thanks, Tim.
You're welcome.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Robbie. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Same sign?
I abstain.
And one abstention. Okay, fourteen information items, we talked about the pitch competition, Bush Ta- Cassidy Days are coming up. September fest is coming up. Uh, no board vacancies, scheduled announcements are listed there. I know that the high school, or the school, public schools start tomorrow. And the college starts Monday. And so it's gonna be a lot of people running, roaming around this town again, so. Anything else from the council?
Just that we can have a follow-up from the earlier, uh, presentation by Mr. Lancaster. If you make sure that gets followed through and we're informed of both sides and that, uh, corrective action is taken.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, then we will adjourn this meeting, uh, eight oh six. Thank you, everybody, for being here, appreciate it.